Good evening. Welcome to the Charter Township of Canton Board of Trustees meeting, which is a study session tonight. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM on February 2nd, 2021. And we have some attendees coming in and some panelists. Great, thank you. So Clerk Seagrist, can you please call roll?
If the board members will be willing to acknowledge their presence and then state their location, that would be lovely. Borninski.
Here, Kate Borninski in Canton Township in my house.
Foster.
I'm here in Canton Township at my house.
Ganguly.
I'm here. I'm in Canton Township at my house.
Beautiful. Kram Hudak.
I'm here in the Canton Township Hall.
Seagrist, present in Canton. Seagrist, I'm sorry, Slavens.
Good evening, and I am here at Canton Township Hall.
Snyderman.
I am here in Canton Township as well.
Thank you. Could I have your motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported by Summer Foster. Clerk Seagrist, can you please call roll?
Borninski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Kram Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Our first agenda item is a study session for the Canton Road Improvement Program update. Now, we will be dividing this into two spots, one for an MDOT presentation at Ford Road, and then the second, Jee will give us a presentation on our roads program. Jee, did you want to introduce how you had it set up tonight, or do you want to start with MDOT?
Sure. Yeah, we'll go ahead and get started with MDOT. They'll do a brief overview of some of the activities that are happening with MDOT, and then go over the Ford Road project. We have Greta Young with us today and Adam Penzenstaller. I think I said that correctly, right? Did I, Adam?
Very good, very good.
So, welcome, and I'll turn it over to them. I think, Adam, you did have a presentation.
Yes.
So I assume we can start with the, after the Ford Road Boulevard, we can have questions, and then we can go into the second half.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome.
Okay. Looks like I'm sharing. You see the presentation up, correct?
Yes.
First time with Zoom, we use Teams, so it's a learning experience for me, so bear with me a little bit. But, good evening. My name is Adam Penzenstaller. I am the MDOT Project Manager for the Ford Road Boulevard project. With me this evening is my supervisor, Greta Young. She is the Taylor TSC Manager. And we wanted to thank you for inviting us this evening and giving us this opportunity to come talk a little bit about what's been progressing with the design of Ford Road. So, I'd like to start off with how we got here. I'll talk a little bit about where we go and how we got to this point. So, we started with the traffic and environmental study that happened back in 2012 to 2013. There were three phases to that study, and in between each phase, there were four different public meetings where we sought input and explanation, and kind of went through all that whole process of trying to develop multiple alternatives, and then eventually settle on the selected alternative. To the right, you can see a picture of the study area that was reviewed during that time, was bounded by Sheldon de Lats in Cherry Hill to Warren. We went through, when we looked through the area, we looked at the crash history and the different traffic patterns, and like I said, developed multiple alternatives to where we got to eventually the selected alternative, which we're designing today, which is the Ford Road Boulevard. So, just a quick overview of what this Boulevard entails. We will be doing a complete reconstruction of the roadway with a new asphalt pavement, be a brand-new Boulevard section through the area, new drainage replacement, and brand-new water main throughout the corridor. With the Boulevard section, we will be widening the Ford Road footprint. So it will be getting wider than what is existing now. It will be spreading out towards the sidewalk. It will include truck looms at certain crossovers, and I will explain in a couple of slides what exactly the truck looms entail. In addition to the roadway work, there's going to be a complete replacement and modernization of the existing traffic signals throughout the corridor, as well as some new signals at select crossover locations. We will also be doing sidewalk replacement in certain areas. It will include crossings, ADA-compliant sidewalk ramps and crossings at the intersections. There's going to be utility coordination and some relocations throughout the corridor, as well as working with the township on their asset management plan, facilitating where we can some of the work that you guys have been doing for the cross-access and driveway consolidations and stuff like that. So we're partnering with you on that. The picture to the left shows what the roadway looks like today. So you have your five-lane section, you've got your center-left turn lane. The artist renderings on the right are more of what the Boulevard section will look like into the future. So the blue picture on the bottom right shows that you'll have crossover pairs on either side of major intersections, so that will be how you facilitate your indirect lefts or your Michigan left turns. And then the picture in the green, which is the upper right, shows just an example of how we'll have U-turn crossovers mid-block to facilitate turnarounds to access businesses on the other side of the roadway. I mentioned those turning looms. So, the reason for that and what we're doing here is that in a lot of areas, this median Boulevard is going to be very narrow. And with such a narrow median, it's very difficult for trucks to be able to make that turn. Now, passenger car is not going to have any problem making a U-turn. A large semi-truck, fire truck, or any kind of a large truck will have a difficulty making that U-turn and staying within the existing roadway. So we're building what we call is a truck loon. It's a little bump out on the other side of the crossover with extra pavement that allows a truck to complete that movement and turn all the way around without riding over the top of the curb and coming outside the roadway. So that's what that will allow. And then the sidewalk would go around the outside of that loon. It will necessitate some additional right-of-way in certain areas. I've got a couple pictures here of what they look like as an example. This is an example from a project up in Auburn Hills along M24. The picture on the left is a street view of what the driver would see, and the picture on the right is an aerial view of that exact same location crossover. So you can kind of see, as the road would come through there, there's a little bump out of pavement where it just allows a large truck to be able to make that turn. So that's what those loons are intended. They won't be at every crossover, just areas where we designate to have large trucks turn around. So... Project schedule. We are currently approaching our plan review milestone, and what that means is that our plans are approximately 60% complete. So that's where we're headed right now today. Our current planned completion is this September of 2021, with our proposed letting to be in December of '21. We anticipate... The current plan for construction is Hagerty Road would be in '22, and then the major Boulevard construction on Ford Road would be in 2023. So that's where we're kind of headed with the construction schedule. Now, we currently are on track for this schedule. What I do want to point out, we are only 60% complete, and anyone that's done any kind of a major rehab at your house or any of the projects, you realize there can be unforeseen things that could pop up. I'm not saying that there will be, but I just want to say that this is the proposed schedule. It's not set in stone at this point in time, but it is what we are progressing towards.
Can you define what the word letting means, the term letting?
Yes, thank you. Letting is when we open bids on the project. So that is, we advertise, we saw for contractors to come out and put in a bid, and the letting is when that bid actually gets opened. So that would be when we select and award the contract. We are heading towards our public outreach phase. We anticipate our very first virtual public meeting to be this spring in 2021. We have a dedicated project website for this project that is not live yet. We are going to launch that in conjunction with the first public meeting. So once we put out that press release and start inviting folks out, that's when we are going to launch the dedicated website. We also have an email address for the TSC and a phone number that can be shared with any of your constituents, any of the business owners, residents of the community, anyone. The email and phone are live today, so please feel free to share that. That reaches us, and we will be able to respond to any questions that anyone might have about this project or any project within the TSC's jurisdictions. And I did want to share with you a couple of discussion items. Not necessarily looking for answers today, I wouldn't spring that on you, but I do want to know that we're to that point now in our design, we're ready to start these conversations, where we are going to need input from the township on how we want to move forward. We are looking at corridor aesthetics. We would like to have the idea from you on what you would like that to look like, as well as some of the impacts that will be out there. I know a lot of the water main work is going to impact those short walls, the brick walls that are out there, so we'll have to talk about how we go about handling that situation. The overall landscaping and look and feel of the corridor is something I'd like to talk about, as well as the lighting. Obviously, with us widening the existing footprint of the roadway, we will be impacting the existing street lighting that's out there. So we do want to talk about what you want that to look like going forward and how we go about putting that back. So that's some of the conversations that we need to start having, and I just wanted to prep you for that. Do you have any questions on where we're at?
Why don't we start with some questions, if you don't mind? Some of our audience members, are there any questions? You can raise your hand. Or if you're on a phone, I don't see any phones, you can press star six. Do we have any questions in the audience? Okay, there'll be a question time later also. How about any board members?
Last one more.
Stephen?
That's okay. You mentioned utilities, Adam?
Yes.
And is there any way to get more detail on what utilities will be affected and what utilities will be doing? And my main goal is to understand, like, are there any advanced technologies that we can lay down along with this project?
Yes.
Some things like that.
Yes, we will be providing that, and thank you for bringing that up. I did mean to mention that a little bit earlier. We had our first utility meeting last week where we were introducing the project to a lot of the utility companies. We had sent them information, asking for input on what they have existing, plotting that into our plans, and now we've gone out and met with them to kind of answer their questions as far as what conflicts that we have. I know that township has a large utility duct underneath the roadway that's out there now encased in concrete. We anticipate leaving that in place. We are doing everything we can to design around that, so we don't impact that. There are some utilities that may have some conflicts with the work and will have to be relocated. For instance, the water main was in direct conflict with what we're doing, so we're replacing that. So those are the types of things we're doing now. We'll know more as we progress, and the utility companies get a chance to look at our plans as far as the exact conflicts, and I can share that with you. As far as technology and going forward, this is a corridor that we're looking at for connected vehicles and automated vehicles. So I can tell you that all the hardware that goes in with all of the signals that are being put in, have that in mind. We will be surveying the project after construction to have a high-tech LiDAR survey so that it can be used for the autonomous vehicle corridor that we have. And then we also accept the technology and the equipment and the signals to be able to talk to infrastructure-to-vehicle and the infrastructure-to-infrastructure technology. So that will be incorporated in the project.
Okay. Thanks. I'll be interested to see more about that and if it can help also with residents or individuals with their also, with their internet access as well, not just ours, like small cells and things like that.
Go ahead.
I had a question about the purchasing of the right-of-way. When does that process start? I noticed that you didn't talk about that in the timeline.
So right-of-way acquisition, we are starting with now as we're developing our right-of-way plans, and we're getting really close to having our final right-of-way plans. We have to get far enough along in our design so that we're pretty confident on where everything is, and then we go out and we work with our acquisition through our real estate division in Southfield. So they are getting prepped to do that now. The reason that was not in the timeline is, like I said, we're still working towards all of that. That is one of the things that could be a challenge to this. That is something that we will be working through, but we do have options, and we obviously will try to minimize the right-of-way with our design. And that's kind of where we're at right now, is trying to go through and minimize all the impacts and only go after those parcels that we absolutely necessarily have to have to build the project.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a question on the bidding process. Will the township be involved in evaluating the bids that come in for the project at all?
And that goes through a low-bid system, so it's strictly low-bid.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Michael?
Adam, so it's my understanding that standard right-of-way for a county road is 66 feet. Is the same thing for Ford Road, is it 66? And how much, how much right-of-way are we talking about acquiring?
Right-of-way varies a little bit throughout the corridor. Though what we're talking about is mainly in the areas of the truck looms. So, the placement of those looms can dictate what we need, and if there are any areas that were sensitive, we're working very closely with the township on the placement and selection of these looms. They, like I said, they don't need to be at every crossover, they only need to be where we specifically want trucks to turn around. So if there are areas, there are options there. We might be able to move one slightly or eliminate it and put it in a different location. So there are areas that we can to try to minimize that, and that is something we're working very closely with the township on.
And then when you said that, so the aesthetics and landscaping and lighting and all that are items for discussion, that's at a later date?
Yeah, well, the point of that was being that we're finally to that spot in our design where we can start incorporating and making those decisions. So I'm looking for, as we progress, our plan review stage here, which is up and coming in the next month or so, I would like to be scheduling meetings with the township and the DDA to discuss what you would like to see out there, so how we can, how can we best partner together to make this quarter and make sure everybody's happy with the end result.
Excellent.
Any other board questions? Kate? Trustee Kate?
Thank you. I'm wondering about the public meeting that will be scheduled. Do you have any idea, like, are we talking late spring, early spring?
I have the exact date yet. The reason I left it generic in spring is that we are currently developing all of our material that we want to share. We're putting together and building the website that we want to share it on in the format, but I want to allow time in that scheduling the meeting to meet with the township first and go over everything, kind of like what we did during the study phase with all of those public meetings. Before we held the public meeting, we first held a meeting within MDOT and the township to kind of go over everything, make sure that everybody was on the same page with what we were proposing, and then we went out and held the overall public meeting.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot about that. I'm also wondering, for this presentation, can the board get a copy of this? And then also, this is more for the supervisor, would it be possible to put it on the website?
Sure. Yeah, we can upload it as part of the study session documents.
Okay, thanks.
And I sent a copy earlier today to Michael and Jee.
Okay, thank you. Tanya? Trustee Tanya?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, as I'm new on the board. So I understand the Boulevard is going to be till Sheldon, till Canton Center Road, is that right?
It's just west of Sheldon, just west of that.
Just west of Sheldon.
Sheldon de Lats.
Okay. And, you know, you talked about having public meetings. How many are you planning to have in the coming, like, do you have a plan to have two more like you had in the previous parts of planning of the project?
We will have, yeah, we will have a couple. I anticipate, like I said, we will have one in spring. I would anticipate another one towards the end of the year, and then probably again during, you know, right before construction or even during construction each year, since this is a two-year project, we, you know, want to give the public a heads-up as to what's going to happen. So ideally, we would like to introduce the construction team and the schedule once that's all known, and then go from there.
Okay. And another question, the last question that I had, you wanted to discuss a few things, like lighting, and you talked about smart technology being implemented because thinking about the future. Are you also thinking of, you know, using some kind of energy-wise renewable, like, you know, solar panels for the lighting and things like that? Or is that a discussion that you plan to have with the township first?
We would be open to having the conversation. As of right now, I don't have that, but there again, we're only about halfway through our design, so none of that has been finalized.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Michael, Clerk Seagrist?
Yeah, well, there's a couple of questions in the Q and A from one of our members of the DDA board. Not surprisingly about the DDA's role in this. It says, "The township with the DDA has spent a significant amount of money on the mast arms. New replacement mast arms need to be considered," or "do," sorry, it's a question. "Do new replacement mast arms need to be considered, or must wire-hung traffic signals be used?" And then there's a follow-up, and I think the follow-up is, I would like to spend a little bit of time on, which is, it says, "Will the DDA have input on knee walls and/or streetlights?" And so, I guess that question would, you know, for, I'll take that too with MDOT is, how much input do you, do you plan on letting Canton Township have on some of that stuff? And then, for our supervisor and for municipal services, yeah, what role does the DDA and the Board of Trustees play in that process? You know, because again, like, I know the median will be narrow in some places, so having grass is something I'm not necessarily interested in having. I know we talked initially about putting lights in the median, and that could potentially be a safety issue with people driving at 45 miles an hour. There's a lot of intricacies to this stuff, but, but yeah, so what is, you know, who are the, who are the kind of the gatekeepers when it comes to the decision-making process on this? Would be, would be some, maybe some clarity on that, and then the specific question about the mast arms.
Okay. Yes, obviously, we're looking to be a partner with both the township and the DDA on the aesthetics and look and feel of the corridors. That is our goal, is to be partners on this and work through these decisions together. You are absolutely right with the median. There are areas where that median is going to be super narrow, and there just isn't going to be ability, so caution against having a whole lot in there. But that's something that we would flush out as we kind of go through that. Mast arms, yes. All of them have to be replaced because with the widening of the roadway, none of the existing signals will fit anymore, so they will all be replaced throughout the corridor. And it was my understanding that the township did desire to have mast arms, so that was something that we were looking into. So, and when it comes to the lighting and the landscaping and stuff like that, I would anticipate the township and the DDA to have a large role in that conversation because according to the agreement, you guys are funding a lot of that. So, obviously, I would assume you would have a large role then.
Yeah, and I think I agree. To add on to what Adam said is, you had talked about a plan review stage, and I believe that would be a good meeting with the township board and DDA, and of course, our municipal services group.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if I could just jump in there real quick, just to give a little bit of a background to, MDOT's been fairly good about involving municipal services, and I believe, and I know that the three full-time electeds, we had a meeting with the DDA board, in fact, as well, last year in regards to prepping for this, and they've been wonderful about partnering with them, and I know, I know Hemi Hamilton's on the, on the call tonight, but they are, they have worked with the DDA and looking at different options, and I know the DDA has been consulted in regards to what the look and feel will be like when, when the project comes to fruition.
Okay.
Thank you, Jee.
No, it's enough. Madam Supervisor, if I may, on that too, I know, you know, we had the issue a couple of years later, I think it was a year ago, where we ran into the funding issue with regards to the DDA and the capture. And so we adjusted that funding mechanism, which I know impacted the DA's budget. I know that we are currently still subsidizing the DDA out of general, out of general fund. This might be an opportunity for us to look at some landscaping of native plants, not necessarily in the median, but on the, you know, it might be something to look at from an environmental standpoint, also from an economic standpoint, about how much money we want to spend, or I know the DDA is responsible for approving its own budget, but that's definitely something, I think, this is an opportunity for us to look at as we move forward and get a fresh start, is, yeah, how much money do we want to put into capital in that area? And then what kind of landscaping do we want to see, and is it sustainable? And what's the cost of sustaining, sustaining it?
Yes, that's a good point. Thank you. So that we, we can talk, we can talk about that further with the, with DDA and with the board. Any other questions?
Wanted to add one thing to my utilities question. Adam, is it possible, when you're having discussions with the utility companies, looking at somehow cleaning up our intersections, and by that, is it possible to move a lot of the wire spaghetti that's in our intersections underground while we're doing construction?
We will work with them and see how we can approach a lot of that. One of the things that we did when we introduced the project was that, when we met last week, not only was this to talk about potential conflicts with the immediate design, we also did inform them, everybody, of the construction. So that way, we asked if there are any future plans or anything that they were hoping to do throughout the quarter, that we can try to do it at the same time so that we can accommodate as best as we can.
Yeah, it's more of an aesthetics thing in that area that I'm referring to, but if, if it's possible, mast arms can be expensive, and when they're all blocked with wires, they don't look as nice. But not high on the priority list in any way, but if possible, if it's part of their plans, that would be great.
Awesome.
And also, you had talked about leaving room for technology. I hope that also assumes that there's going to be empty conduits for extending technology in the future in terms of even additional power.
Yep, and I believe a lot of your existing duct work down there now has some existing empty conduits in that. And then we were also looking at adding something for, for our system for ITS.
Great, thank you. And, okay, oh, Michael, do you want to go next, Clerk Seagrist? Was there another question?
There was a statement that just said, it was, it was a statement about irrigation, that landscaping will depend upon irrigation post-construction. That was, that wasn't a question, it was just a statement.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this part? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Greta and Adam, for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you to our guests.
Thank you for inviting us. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this evening.
Yeah, so we appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sure we'll be asking you more questions soon.
Thank you for having us.
Forward to it.
Thank you. You can stay and listen to the rest if you'd like. We're going to be discussing more roads.
Thank you.
Thanks. Whenever you're ready, Jee.
All right. I will share my screen. Can everybody see, does it say Canton Road Improvement Program? Okay. All right. So what I was going to do is go over a little bit of the history with the Canton Road program and then go through the 2020 projects, a summary, and then also go into the 21 projects that we are proposing. I will say, I left it off my slide, but on January 7th, we did meet with the Road Advisory Committee to go through a very similar presentation. It looked a little bit different, but the information is, is the same. So I will get... So I will get started. In two thousand and eighteen, the Canton residents passed a road millage, that's point zero zero one four five millage. It generates almost five point six million dollars per year. And the intent of the program is to provide the flexibility year to year to match revenues from the millage. To prioritize projects that not only staff looks at, but the Board of Trustees and the Rose Advisory Committee. It's for twenty years, and when this was kicked off in two thousand and eighteen. The investments were to be divided up in the following way, which is supposed to be fifty-five percent into the major roads. Thirty percent into the local county subdivision roads and then fifteen percent state roads. Which that fifteen percent in, is, was really for Ford Road, the Ford Road Project. And we send the state the million dollar check, I believe, I know it's every year, I don't know what time of year. But since the millage inception, we have sent that to MDOT for the Ford Road Project. One of the questions is always asked, how do we pick the roads that we do pick? And there's not one streamlined answer, there's a lot of aspects that go into picking roads. One of the most utilized ways to pick a road that, that needs to be. Attended to is the called a Pazer Rating, which is pavement surface evaluation and rating system. And it rates all of our roads, and I believe we do those, Bill may have to correct me on this, it's either two, every two or every three years. We will get this Pazer Rating Study evaluated and looked at, and take that into consideration when we're looking at our road projects every year.
Yeah, it's actually, every, every two years, we have one from eighteen and we just completed one for twenty twenty.
Great. We also look at avoiding any of the Wayne County projects, so we work with them. And make sure that we, whatever our project's going to be, that we don't have any construction crossovers that would create more of. bottleneck for traffic, the maintenance, obviously, and then there are some projects that are just too small for the, for Wayne County to address. And we, we take a look at those. In the next, in the first five years of the Millage Program, we've made sure that. We shied away from, we prepped for the Ford Road detours. We're trying to make sure that we hit those up before that project gets started. One of the part. One part of the program here and homeowners associations, there was a call for, for application. actions last spring and we had twenty, I believe twenty-seven subdivisions show interest. And, or maybe it was twenty-nine, and we divided those up into two years. We completed some in twenty twenty and we still have thirteen more that are to be completed in twenty twenty-one. This shows how an association can actually get involved. And with what percentage of match, what size project they actually could get accomplished within their own association. And we do have, we, we've looked at this and looked at the twenty, some subdivisions that have submitted their projects. And we have various sizes that run the gamut of all of this, from a very small project to the largest project that you can see on the screen. When we are communicating our road construction projects to. To the residents and to the public, we use a couple of different ways to get word out. One is the focus, which hits every household, social media, the township website. Direct emails to homeowners associations and subdivision boards and the press releases. The township website is probably the most dependable and the biggest resource that we have. And one of the things that is really popular on that website, I'm going to show it to you because we've done some upgrades to it, is the interactive roadmap. And if I'm lucky, this will work, yes. So if you go to the front page of our home, of our website, you can, there's a road icon and you can actually click on that and it'll take you to. This particular map here and it's interactive, it's an interactive map. That shows you where all of the road construction projects are that we've completed since the inception of the millage. And I don't know why this one always wants to turn itself off, okay. So you can see that we've hit a lot of the township already, just within the short two years that we've been. Collecting the millage and doing the work. And please note that obviously, last year with COVID was, we had a delay in the start of all of our projects. Because construction was stopped for a while. One of the nice things about this map, and this is always, so any suggestions that you have, I would welcome. This is always changing, we're always evaluating it and working with our GAS team to make sure that this is the most user-friendly map that we can find. But if you actually were to hover over a particular road project and click on it, it'll bring up. A small information center that'll show you exactly which the road, what road it is, what category it fell under. And then if the construction was complete, now this map looks a lot different in the middle of June and July. Because right now we don't have any active road, road construction projects, so everything is green because it's all been completed. When we go ahead and announce and we, after tonight, we will add the twenty twenty-one road projects in from the township. And those will actually be red, they'll still be on here, but you'll be able to see that these are going to be upcoming projects for the twenty twenty-one construction season. The dark green are the major road projects, the light green is the local roads. So if you were to click on, let's say this one, this was a local subdivision project in twenty twenty, it's the Franklin Palmer Estate subdivision. So you, you really can see where the, where the millage dollars are going to work. And see what areas of the townships that we have hit. This is all-inclusive. And the good thing, the nice thing about this map too, is if you go to this top right corner. And you click on, I, these are layers, I think they look like posted notes. But if you click on those, you actually can take off particular years. So if we wanted to take off the two thousand and nineteen local subdivisions. Then you can just see what we did in the twenty twenty construction season. And you can do that with, you know, any way you want to play with these options, you can play with them in. And utilize this map for any information. I will go back to. So last year, we completed the three major projects that you see here, Canton Center Road to Warren Road. Hagerty Road from Hanford to Warren and then Hagerty from Palmer to Michigan Avenue. We also had the twenty-nine subdivisions that were applied for. Sixteen of those were completed in twenty twenty and thirteen will be done in twenty twenty-one. This is some of the before and after pictures of the twenty twenty-one project, or I'm sorry, the twenty twenty projects that were done. You can see the before is on the left, the after is on the right. And I'm just going to go through a few of these, we did a few of these aerial shots, this is Canton Center North of Warren. You can see right through here how horrible that side of the road was. And then here was where obviously a lot of the repairs took place, side by side. And we're going to be putting this on the website too, so everybody will be able to see this presentation tonight. And they'll be able to see some of this before and afterward as well. And actually, I just thought of, as I said, that map gets smarter and smarter all the time, but I'm going to see if we can actually get these pictures. A link to these pictures right from the actual road project, where if you were to click on it, these pictures will come up and show the before and after. We'll see if our GAS team can pull that up. This is Hagerty, Hanford and Warren. This is Hagerty, Michigan Avenue to Palmer. And these are the twenty twenty-one projects that we are proposing for this upcoming construction season. We have Canton Center from Cherry Hill to Ford. We have Sheldon from Cherry Hill to Ford and we have Hagerty from Michigan Avenue Van Born. I have next to each of those a estimated cost, we won't know what those final costs are until it goes out to bid. And we get those bids back in, which should be later this winter. And then we have the Boulevard Project, that's the, that's the state portion that went up to the state. And then we have a local match program, which is the thirteen subdivisions that are going to participate in twenty twenty-one. And that's an estimated cost of one point two five million. We also do local unmatched work was, which is where we work on catch basins. And any other miscellaneous item that may come up, and we estimate that cost to be about five hundred thousand for the twenty twenty-one construction season. So with all of those projects there, you're looking at just over, just under seven million dollars. Worth of projects that we will be completing in the twenty twenty-one construction season. You may be asking, okay, that's a lot more than what the actual millage is, and it is. But we actually had a slower season in twenty twenty due to COVID. There were a couple of projects that we could have probably squeezed in, but because construction was delayed. We didn't do as much there. So we are going to have years where you may have projects that are bigger than others. And we may, and that's the beautiful thing about having this program for twenty years, that we know we really have a section of the township. That needs a, a lot of attention. Excuse me. And we know it's going to be a much more expensive project. We actually have some flexibility with how those dollars are used. And. I will, that, that is a real high level overview, I knew there were going to be questions, so I wanted to kind of get the, the facts out there. And, and I want to go back and also just say that. We're going to take, the one thing I don't have in here is the dollars spent to date from the date that the millage started and all the projects have started. And I, there have been some questions from residents in regards to that. We will, where I got with Wendy earlier this evening. And we're going to get together and put together some information that we can put on the website and share with where the tax, where the millage dollars are going. And how much has been spent year to date. And with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and we're here to answer any questions and go into more detail. Wherever there's more detail required.
Want to start with anyone in the audience, any of our attendees, have any questions, you can raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Parker. Can we, do we have to raise him? Oh, Michael, you're on mute.
I have allowed him to speak, or I've, I believe I've asked him to unmute, so go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, a couple of questions, one, twenty twenty-one, there's thirteen subdivisions that are head projects. And last year, I think we had close to twenty. And I'm just wondering why there wouldn't be more subdivision projects. Two, you know, I look at some of the Sheldon Road from Ford Road to Cherry Hill. Is Wayne County throwing money in there too, Jay, or? So I mean, are we funding a lot of that from the township funds?
Yes, so I'll address the first question in regards to the subdivisions. Those are completed on, some divisions actually apply to become part of the program. They work with the township and then they will actually give a percentage of the project to the township. And that will get them in line for the projects. This was our first call for, was last year, and we had a great response with twenty-nine some. We just couldn't complete all of them in one year, so we took ourselves to the max of what could actually be handled and be completed in the twenty twenty project year. So that just left the thirteen for this year. We have, I believe, two or three other subdivisions that have applied and are in the queue. So we will work with them too and, and work them right in, so there's not a limit. And again, some years will be more than others depending on the demand from the subdivisions and the requests from the associations.
Well, at Sunflower, I mean, we've, we've committed to a long term to be involved in these projects. But I'm, I'm just wondering, the other issue that I have are two streets within Sunflower. Swanmere and Lambeth, which I think a lot of the board are familiar with. But it's going on seven years and all we can ever seem to get Wayne County to do is coal patch. It lasts a couple of weeks and then we're back into driving down a battlefield.
Hey, Bob?
We're not asking, we're not asking to have it repaired, I'm at least asking. To maybe do a hot patch or spray patch, something that lasts a lot longer than the coal patch.
Hey, Bob, this is, this is Bill.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't recognize your voice at first. I can, I can feel the, that, that answer because we, we know the area on Swanmere, the area with ASR. The, there was a similar area near Cherry Hill. And Beck in the Fairways West Subdivision where we actually did.
Yes.
That capping this year, and that is the type of capping technique we'd like to use up in Sunflower. When, when, when we get up there with you guys, it was very, it worked out very well. And we have, I believe we've been out there with the county to look at it. So that's the type of fix we're looking at for Swanmere and the other area up in Sunflower.
Yeah, Lambeth, yeah. Well, and I guess I. My, my opinion is that's a Wayne County issue. I hate to see our funds being used to do that, but I understand that that doesn't always work. But I, I, the other question that I'll, I'll quit bugging you, I just. Is Wayne County spending the same amount of dollars within Canton that they did in seventeen, eighteen?
Yeah.
Before we passed the millage.
Yes, Wayne County is still very active in the township. I did not put it on a slide, but you know, for instance, in twenty twenty, they did complete Cherry Hill from Canton Center to Lily and Sheldon from Ford to Warren. And then we have three projects that they're looking at for, for twenty twenty-one as well, that are, that are the same size. So they are, they are still routinely, we're routinely spending the same amount of dollars in Canton as they have historically.
Okay, just one last question, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just want, is there an opportunity, for example, like Sunflower to be. I guess on the list for twenty twenty-one if there's any funding available. Even though we did have work done last, in twenty twenty.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, yeah, I know we actively work with your association. So we will be doing those call for projects, but what I'll do is have Bill and his staff follow up with you to see. To what extent, how, how much we can actually handle, if we can handle more, and then what else is in the queue. So I don't want to say, yeah, but, but I think we, you know, we absolutely will work with the association on what we can get accomplished.
Yeah, well, Bill's, Bill's got my number, so. Okay, thank you.
When is the call for applications for the subdivisions, when does that start?
We, we are, we are working on a, a schedule for that right now and then we're going to roll that out. To the whole community and also to all the people we've already spoken with. So we're, we're looking at probably sometime in April.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Could you just let us know what the Wayne County projects are?
Yes, and I will, I will, I know this is being recorded, so I have to put a little caveat, these are tentative. Because the county does sometimes change their minds, but Cherry Hill from Hagerty to Lily. And then the Cherry Hill Bridge west of Ridge Road. And Bill, you're going to have to correct me because I believe that we thought Beck Road from Ford to Warren was on there and we may have heard that that was postponed.
I believe they're moving that till the, the next year, yeah.
Yes. So Cherry Hill from Hagerty to Lily and then the Cherry Hill Bridge, West of Ridge Road for twenty twenty-one. The Cherry Hill Bridge Road Project, or the Cherry Hill Project will, as it's slated right now, will be a two-year project.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other attendees with questions? You can raise your hand. All right, thanks. How about anybody on the board?
I do, there's an attendee question in the chat, did you, I don't know if you saw that.
Sure, go ahead.
Directed to Bill Surcheck. Is PRMA able to consider funds from MDOT and Wayne County for future projects? I imagine it's a typo and he means Parma.
Oh, no, Parma is a nonprofit association of three. Private road associations. of three private road associations, four private road associations. So we're ineligible for grant funding through a, a state or federal program.
Thank you. Treasurer Slavens?
I, I just wanted to make a comment. I know I'm hearing Jaded mentioned about putting the funding on the website, both what Wayne County and what we collect through our millages yearly. So I'm glad that you're going to start putting that on, because that is a big question that probably all of us are getting from our residents. So it's wonderful to hear that you're going to put something together, whether it's a pie chart or that, just to let people know where their dollars are going. So thanks a lot.
And I, and I think one thing else, too, in addition to the, to the, the overall look of the, the financial commitments and what we've spent year to date, when we go back and you click over a particular street and you see the project, we're going to go back and we're going to incorporate the cost into that as well, so that, that, when you click on that, that'll be a one-stop snapshot of what that whole entire project looked like. What year it was, what kind of construction, and then how much it actually cost.
Can I just add one thing to that, Anne Marie? So yeah, my comment is, on the interactive map, it would be great. I, I didn't see at this time if there was like, the Wayne County projects were delineated on that map also. I think that would be great to add that, so folks can look at it and see, this is how much Wayne County has done over the last two to three years, and this is what the township has done. And then my other question was on the, I love seeing all the bright green on the interactive map for all of the work that's been done in subdivisions. I'm just wondering how you're going to indicate for subdivisions that are doing multi-year projects like Glengarry, like Sunflower. Because we want to acknowledge that that's work is being done year after year, but if it's still bright green, it looks like the same project.
Yeah, maybe we can, I can work with the GIS team on maybe a different, like a, like a hatchmark or something within that particular green area. And then also going back to the details, when you click on the details, we can specify that they were a participant in 2020, 21, 22. So we can delineate that there too and break down how much they committed each year.
And then I think as you're compiling data, it would be great to see the number of miles, number of lane miles that were repaired for the, the major roads and also for the local subdivision roads.
Yes, and I apologize, I didn't put that in my presentation, but I, we, we've completed 10.62 miles so far since the, since the start of the millage.
That's awesome, thank you.
You're welcome, and I will add that.
Anyone else? Trustee Steven?
Thank you. I don't like construction, but I love all the construction that's going on in Canton. I think it's great. It's exciting to see our roads improving. To that end, Bill, I don't know if you have like an overall Pacer score from 2020 and can compare it to 2018 and tell us if it's on average, it's going up at all?
We, we did do a, a Pacer in 2018 and they just completed one in 2020. I want to adjust it a little bit and include Anford and Salts. But it, it's a, it's a very small change, Steve. I believe it was point zero something. And I, I do know that when Livonia did this as a comparison, over a 20, over their first, I think 10 or 15 years, they were able to drop their Pacer by a 50, 50 or 60 basis points. So it is imperceptible, but it's perceptible, but it's very small.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just a comment on that, one of the concerns, well, one of the issues is, is as you're, you're constructing and fixing one road, the other roads are going this direction, so it's a balancing act. And that's why there's so many things that we look at when we decide, okay, this is a road project to, that needs its attention, whether the Pacer rating is here or whether it's here. But yes.
I have two more questions. One is, just on the county, to Mr. Parker's point. They were spending about three, three and a half million dollars a year prior to our millage and basically promised to keep spending that. So it'd be good to know if they are spending at least close to, I mean, we are helping them fix their roads. I think that, you know, they should recognize that we were putting money in the game too, as a community. And I guess that wasn't a question except to know, I'd like to know if, if they're doing that last year, next year. And then on the subdivisions, I think we talked about this at a recent board meeting where the roads came up. But I sense that there's some, I don't know if it's a lot, of subdivisions that have either weak associations or non-existent associations or no association, but are still public road. And can we help them out a little bit? I mean, if we know where there are problems in subdivisions and there's not really anyone to take up the mantle, is there a way we can help them?
Steve, I, I would say we do have the ability to do some fixes in subdivisions who, who don't participate. That first year, and starting again in, in 21, we're going to be doing work in some subdivisions. In particular, in the southeast area where we're doing a lot of other work, who are not in the program for matching. But we're still going to be able to go in there and fix some drainage issues and some intersections and some catch basins mostly. That's the part of the program we, we had come up with at, at the very beginning to at least be able to work in all the subdivisions, whether they can participate or not.
Yeah, to add to that too, one of the things that we did look at from a, from a, both a staff point and then the advisor committee we discussed was the local match program itself, and actually changing the percentage of contribution that association would contribute. We wanted to make, I mean, we had thought about making it just a 20% match across the board. And through discussion, we realized that we did put some of those areas at a disadvantage. So that if you had a group of 10 homes that were not part of an association, they could still get together and submit for a $50,000 project with only a $2,500 investment. So the way that the plan is structured, I think we still have, it's still designed in a way to help out some of those areas. And we'll continue to look at that because that's something that we did realize that we needed to keep it the way it was for those, those areas.
Yeah, I just worry that those people don't know. You know, we know that they have a problem and they know they have a problem, but they don't know that they can do that. And how they communicate that. I know the focus and other things, but if we really want to fix some things, especially in these coming years when less, fewer and fewer subdivisions apply, because the big ones have already applied. That maybe we need to find some kind of reach out program. I don't know, knock on doors, I'm not really sure what.
Yeah, we can take that back to the, to the group and put our, and see what we can come up with. But I think we could, we definitely can identify those areas and try and do some outreach.
Oh, I guess I had one more question. You had $500,000 of non-matched work, local road work. Do you know what you're doing with that this year?
That's, that's what Bill was referring to with the catch basins and the drainage. We do, yes.
We actually do have a few subdivisions who do not have organized HOAs who, who are in the program last year and next year. So they are usually the same ones that have to pass the hat in order to snowplow. So, so they are out there.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Um, Michael, I think you had your hand raised next.
Yeah, my question is, um, Bill. ASR, is that something you can test for, or is it something like, like you just look at the symptoms and you're like, oh, this concrete has ASR? Like, is there a way to quantify it?
There is, you could actually do a core sample of a, of a concrete material that, that you can test it. There are, more importantly, there are tests done and assessments done on modern concrete that's being used today to be sure that that does not occur. So that, that problem doesn't exist in probably the past 10 or more years, 20 years. So they've caught it at the plant, so they don't have it anymore. But it generally comes in our area from the 80s and 90s, and you can usually identify it from the surface, so we don't do the testing.
Yeah, the reason I ask is that I just, I, I, just maybe four days ago, I had a conversation with Congresswoman Haley Stevens. Because, you know, driving down Canton Center Road recently, I had the interesting experience of thinking to myself, we put $2 million into this, well, the county put $2 million into this not very long ago, and it's rife for some additional money. And I thought to myself, you know, one of the things we had done, and I understand we have a different strategy going forward. But one of the things that had been done by the county was, you know, we'll, we'll cut out the bad concrete, pour new concrete. Keep in mind, the, all the concrete still has ASR. And so it's like every couple of years, we could put, you know, one to $2 million into this one stretch of road. And over a 10-year period, we might spend $10 million when we could have just replaced the whole thing for, for maybe six or seven million dollars. Now, my math might be off, but the point stands, I think, that in some of these instances, it might be better to just pull it out. Now, in a perfect world, you could do that with all the ASR, but we know that we don't live in a perfect world. You know, roads are expensive and, and so on and so forth. But I have a, I have a dream, and my dream is to get some state legislators and some federal legislators together, and to have both a federal and a state funding mechanism to solve the existing ASR issues. Obviously in Michigan, more directly Canton, which is what I care about more than anything else. And so my goal is to educate those legislators to try to find a way to, to get across the aisle as well, especially in Michigan where we will need Republican support. And to tell a narrative to them about how not only does this mean jobs, not only is this a technology issue. In the long run, it might be economical as well and save us money. I just don't know how to pull that kind of information together, but I do think, and I would challenge everybody, that that would be something very worthwhile. And then additionally, if we were to get something like that up and running, to find a way for townships to get it, right? Because we don't receive Act 51 money, so how the heck do we, if we get the program up and running, you know, that's fine, that'd be great. I don't want to do all that work for Livonia, I want to do that work for Canton. So how do we find a way to, to, to make sure that we could get that money? Because again, if it goes to the county as well, it's okay. Now we're going through a third level of government that we have to work to try to get that money back into our community. So these are the things that keep me up at night. But I think it's, it's germane to the discussion we have here because Mr. Parker, who lives in, in Sunflower, you know. I know they've got over $10 million worth of work that needs to be done on that, on their roads, I think, in the long run, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, the, these are some, some, you know, some of our subdivisions, some of our major thoroughfares are just rife with ASR. And it's, I hate throwing good money after bad. It just doesn't make sense. I understand why we have to do it, because I understand the economics of the, of the road situation, but it would be.
Yeah, just to comment on the, the specific issue with Canton Center north of Ford. We know that's a big issue, and I can say that that's on every meeting agenda that we have with the county. And I think that the county is well aware too, that that has to be a total reconstruct. We've had some internal conversations with staff too about, because the millage, the way that it's funded on a yearly basis and not all the projects come, you know, we don't get $5.6 million in and $5.6 doesn't go out the same year. That this could possibly be something where we could partner with them to actually do a full reconstruct there. But obviously, that could be a, a bigger conversation. And when we have subdivisions that are still knocking at the door to help their subdivisions and things like that, I guess. I guess input for the board would be great, because we'd have to, you know, prioritize that. And if that's something that we definitely want to tackle, we can work that into our discussions and our future budgets for the next four to five years.
I think that makes, I mean, it makes sense, you know, the, the reason I want additional funding is, is, you know, we've got a mill just going to raise $110 million. We're also kicking into the Ford Road Project, right, over a 20-year period. And, and, but we've also, but we've got like $220 million with the road work out there. And so we don't even have enough to do, 50% of the road maintenance that are the road, you know, work that needs to be done in Canton Township. So that's the only reason I want to see if we can find money elsewhere. But I get your point, and that's smart, and I really appreciate the work you guys are doing on that.
Do we have an estimate about how many miles of ASR we have in Canton?
That's hard to, that, that's really hard to say. We haven't assessed it all. And Michael, I would say, as far as determining absolutely where the ASR is, a testing would be quite an expensive proposition. But I want to throw something else out there as I listen to this discussion. You know, I know it sounds like capping of a, of an ASR afflicted road with a few inches of asphalt. Maybe sounds like a Band-Aid, but if you look at it from a life cycle standpoint on a road like that, if you have a subdivision road that you can get another 15 to 20 years of life out of by doing an asphalt cap, you may actually be, that may actually be a cheaper proposition than full replacement. So you always have to think about that road project by road project. I'm not advocating for one after the other, but capping versus huge reconstructions is, is, you know, you have to look at that, you have to look at those costs.
Oh, that's smart. I, I know Lily looks good, right? Lily was a capped road and that, that turned out really well, but.
We didn't have ASR under that.
Right, right.
Right, right.
I just know what's underneath always comes up. I think you told me that, Bill.
Reflects.
Anyone else on the board or staff here? Kate? Trustee Kate?
Thanks. First of all, I love the interactive map. And with the additions of the things that trustee Foster talked about, I think it will be great. I mean, it's, it's already fabulous, but it'll be even better. I also am excited that you're going to be putting on the website where the millage dollars are going. Because I think that's really important for the public to understand. That being said, I am wondering a couple of things. First of all, do you know when, I, I know you said the Pacer scores that had already been done for 2020, do you know when we'll get the results? And when will they be put on the Roads Task Force website or page on the website?
I'll, I'll check with our, our consultant. I know I have some initial maps. I'll have them finish them up, and we can actually post those.
Okay, that would be great. I am concerned like trustee Snyderman is for these subdivisions that don't have associations. And I know you said that there are some that are participating, which is great. If they're doing the match program, would they have to do a special assessment?
No, if they, if there was a section of road, it would probably, it would depend. If it was just a small section owed in front of 10 houses, and that was, that was the extent of the construction area, and then they got all those houses to participate and came up with the dollars, they wouldn't have to do an SAD. It was a much larger scale. We would look at an SAD, just because number one, the, we're going to get more done. And two, then you're guaranteed to collect those dollars and everybody's involved. We are working on a couple of SADs now.
Well, you, you know, there, we don't ask them how they come up with the money. Actually, some have it in their about, balances. Some do a, an assessment amongst their HOA, and then some.
Specifically, specifically talking about the, the ones that don't have a homeowners association. So I'm just wondering, by what means are they able to fund, you know, the matching program?
They can do either or. They could petition to do an SAD. They could go through the process if, if that's what they desired and they wanted a really large project. I think it's a case by case situation. Depending, you know, if it's a smaller thing and they, and each house can put in $500 and it's a one-time hit and we can get their problem taken care of. They may not have to go through that process of an SAD, because it's a very lengthy process to, to see an SAD from start to finish.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that if they don't have a homeowners association already, how are they advocating for themselves if, if they have to do an SAD?
I, I can give you an example of four homeowners who are on a stretch of road who are most likely going to be in the program next year, and they've come up with the, I know them, I've known them for years. And they, they're going to come up with the, I believe, 2,500 and do a, a project. And they, they're going to come up with the, I believe, 2,500 and do a, a project in front of their road. And I think they're just collectively writing a check. I know that Mayfair, who doesn't have the ability to assess, does, did create an association. So that they can have a bank account and do, do work. So Mayfair is a good example where they don't have the, the ability to actually assess their members, but they, they do collect.
Okay.
So there's a variety.
Okay, I just think that there might be, need to be some, some outreach to those subdivisions. I don't know how many there are, hopefully not too many. Then I'm also wondering, and this is sort of a, kind of a nitpicky question. But on the slide about the local road match program. I was wanting some clarity on the first sentence. It says the match provides greater parity between those who live on public subdivision roads and those who live on private roads. Could you just explain what you meant by that, Jade?
Let me read it. Oh, I have a typo. Sorry about that.
I, I was able to figure out what you meant.
Yeah, sorry about that. Well, because, yeah, I mean, the, the private roads. Because it, they have, it looks like they have systems already in place to, to address their road projects. Where a lot of the other public subdivision roads do not. Um, and I don't know if you want to add to that, Bill, but I think that's where, um, that's what we're trying to say, that there's a parity between the two.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's it. And, you know, most of the private road associations do have those mechanisms built in. That's a good point. And I think it, it does, I think we were probably thinking about parity. In that if you have that advantage of being in a public road subdivision, you still have to make a contribution. To, to give you, I guess, parity with the private road who have no opportunity for financing. Does that make sense?
So I think what, if I understood correctly, I think what you said was sort of the opposite of what Jade was saying. Maybe I had, I don't know.
No, I, I, I agree with what Bill's saying and maybe I didn't, maybe I'm out correctly.
Okay, okay. Um, I think we, we also have to keep in mind that, um, there are also three subdivisions in Parma. That don't benefit either way from any of this. Is that correct?
Well, uh, the residents of Parma, and I've used this with many residents, the residents of Parma benefit from the portions on the major roads and Ford Road. But no, they, they can't participate, just like the Hamlet or Cherry Hill Village, they're in the same, same boat. Parma does have that mechanism where we, we do the road work in there, already built in.
Funded by the residents.
Right.
Yes, I know I'm a resident of one of those subdivisions. So, um, that's why I bring it up because I think that, um, though the residents of those subdivisions, not everyone understands. That their subdivisions are not benefiting from the roads program. Not that Canton as a whole doesn't benefit, because I do believe that we need to, to fix our roads. But, um, you know, there's a little bit of non-parity there.
This was a board's nod towards giving some parity. It was never going to be enough, right? But it was important to us on the previous board to make sure that there was some contribution by those subdivisions that were getting, uh, the funding. Oh, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, um, you know, I think that it comes up in our subdivision because we're part of Parma. So that's why I'm bringing it up, just because I think that, um, we, I think everyone needs to understand. That there are subdivisions that don't, um, get to participate because they're part of Parma. But that there's still a greater, um, good going on.
Thank you, Michael.
As there was a chat question, um, that said, so all, so, so residents on private subdivisions are still taxed. And the answer to that question is, is, uh, yes, all property is taxed. The, uh, 1.4 or 5 mils regardless of what type of road it resides on.
Tanya, Trustee Tanya?
Thank you. Um, so I had a question first on, um, the Pazer, um, study that's being done. So our growth plan is based on what we decide, what was decided when the road task force put it forward, right? The, the Pazer study doesn't change anything on our, on our plan that we have for the next few years. Is that right? Like, do you think, if you see, if you do did a Pazer study today, um, would that affect prioritizing certain roads before others?
Yeah, it would definitely come into play as one of the, one of the criteria to look at when we're putting together the projects. And actually something that we talked about during our advisory committee meeting is actually putting together a five-year plan. So in 2022, or probably at the end of 2021, we'll come back to the board. And when we do this presentation again, it's going to look a little different because we're going to have our proposed plans for 2022. We're also going to project out for the next four years after that. So that we can actually say, okay, here's what we're working towards. And then every year that will be reevaluated, the Pazer rating will absolutely come into play when we get those new ratings and say, okay, well. The, this rating really went down for this particular road. We may have to look at that and prioritize that over something else. So it absolutely will come into play. But it's, it's part of like, um, you know, of those five things that we look at on a yearly basis. And I should say, um, that the next, since the inception and for the next couple of years. The major focus has been for the roads that are eating around Ford Road. So when we have that construction, that we have, um, viable roads that run perpendicular to that. So that, um, so there's been a lot of focus around that. That's, that's really coming to play more so than maybe a Pazer rating has. So it just depends on the situation.
Just provide a little bit of context for, um, Tanya and Kate, who are not on the board at the time. Um, when the Roads Millage was passed and when we started talking through things with the Roads Task Force. There hadn't been a Pazer study done on Canton roads in quite a while. And it was something that the board really wanted to see. And we wanted to be able to use data, um, as we were determining road projects. So we could say that we were looking at the conditions of the roads and we were looking at traffic counts and things like that. And so one of the things that we built into the Roads Improvement Program was doing a Pazer study every two years. So we're able to compare over time, um, how we're improving the roads network.
I have another question as to, you said we have 13 subdivision projects this year. You're asking for, um, other subdivisions to put in the request. Will this, will that be for this calendar year or for the next calendar year?
No, that, that would be lining up projects for the 22 and 23, uh, construction years, yes.
All right. Thank you so much. And I really like all the ideas about what we can put on the website. Especially the financial bit of it, because, um, a lot of residents ask questions are, are not really clear on what exactly the money is being spent on. Everybody thinks we are spending all the money on the Ford Road Boulevard project. So it'd be a good thing to do.
Yeah, it would, I mean, just a suggestion, anytime you get questions, um, please forward them our way for, do we can answer those? And then also refer to the website. And if you see things on the website that you think will help educate the public, please let us know. Because we're always looking at that and we know that's going to be our biggest resources to send people there. Because it's just going to be, the longer the project goes on, the more information we're going to be able to house there.
Thank you. Any other questions for the, the board or the staff? I noticed Mr. Parker did have his hand up and I don't know if it canceled out after a timeout. So, Mr. Parker, did you still, raise your hand again if you still want to ask a question? Yes, he does. Okay, I think it timed out. Okay, go ahead. You have to unmute. Here you go.
The only, uh, the only question that Bill may be able to answer this. The, uh, ASR, I know a lot of the airports had that same issue. And some state roads had that issue and they were able to get federal funding and state funding for, especially like the airports. Has that ever been considered that that's a possibility for us?
You, you know, Bob, I'll, I'll have to talk to the county about that because you're, you're correct. The, the new, uh, runway at the airport that was poured back in 20, 25 years ago. That was one of the largest ASR problems in the country and the whole thing is being replaced. I, I don't know the mechanisms, but we can check with the county because they have knowledge of that. I don't know if there's any programs that would extend down to a local level, but we can look into that.
Well, no, my, my whole point was what Michael was saying is trying to get the federal and state to help. I just wanted to throw that out, Bill, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you, Ann Murray. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the informative information and presentation. I'm sure people can still ask questions. We will be happy to answer. Um, are there, is there any other public comment? Anything else? Raise your hand if you have any. Okay, I don't see, seeing none. How about on the board or staff or, or friends from MDOT, any other public comment?
I, I just want to say thanks, everybody, for taking the time. But then also when we get the, um, dollars spent to date and the graphs, the visuals put together. I will not only put them on the website, but I'll email that out to the board as well. So you have that information to add to your slides.
Okay, thank you. Michael, I think you had a comment.
Yeah, I just, um, you know, being both an election official and a trustee for Canton Township, which has the Roads Millage. The statement was made by trustee Ganguly that, um, some residents believe all the money is going to Ford Road. And I'm sure Adam and Garetti would love if that were the case. Y'all know it's not the case and we said it a million times. We said it during the campaign. And, uh, you know, when, when we were, when this was going on the ballot, you know, we talked about, uh, the breakdown. We talk about it tonight and, um, you know, due to social media, we've really done ourselves a disservice as a society. We've, we've really done a really good job of miseducating ourselves on facts, right? And, um, the way the world truly operates. And so I think the challenge for this administration, the board in general, is to continue to message and promote. The relevance of this program in people's lives and how, um, we took on this task of drastically altering the state of our roads. I have felt it in the short period that we've, since we've started. You know, part of that's geographically where I'm located. You know, uh, I'm right by Cherry Hill and, um, Lily. And so Cherry Hill and Sheldon, so I, in between Sheldon and Lily, so I get to drive down brand new Cherry Hill Road, which is beautiful. Lily, which is beautiful. I go down Sheldon, which is not far from me, which is beautiful. And so I get to see, you know, I'm driving down all this lovely, brand new road and it just, so I can see. And while those are all county projects, but suffice to say, we've done a lot of other work too on salts and so on and so forth. But the, the work in general. And, um, one of the things I talked to recently with, uh, somebody from a parks system was they said, you know, only people in government care or know what park they're in. Your average citizen doesn't know if they're in a state park, a metro park, a county park, a township park, a city park, a national park, a, a national forest. They have no clue. And to be honest, it doesn't really matter to them and it's not relevant to their life. Uh, but we make these distinctions in our lives because we think it's substantially important. But in the end of the day, we're all partners. And that's why I'm glad to see we have MDOT here and we work with the county as best we can to help, you know, motorists and in residents. You know, as we traverse all of these roads, regardless of whether it's a Parma road or whether it's an MDOT road or a county road or a road that the township has decided to fix for the county, which is really just an al, amalgam of all of the residents in Canton Township. Who are both county taxpayers and township taxpayers. You know, we, we, we've done, we've, we've picked a meaningful task. Um, I hope we're up to it, but I think it's on us to, 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 to educate the residents and to bring that home. And, and, and then we have administered this well to make sure that people see that it's impacting and benefiting their lives. But I'm excited about the work. I think we're doing a good job so far. And I would just, um, push us to continue to, to frame this as we move forward. And know full well that in a year, people on Facebook will be saying that, uh, 100% of the millage is going to the Boulevard all over again. And we'll say it 16 times to, to Sunday, that it's not the case. And, uh, it'll, it'll win one ear, not the other, but we'll keep doing it.
Thank you. Yeah, communicate, communicate and educate. Anyone else? Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Thank you. Um, Clark Seigris, can you please take role on the motion?
All right. Orninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seigris, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Great, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.